Call the meeting in order and ask for a roll call.
Bloomer, Leach.
Here.
Lehman, Mendel.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public hearing on the annexation agreement with Kyle Lutzfield for the 2711 West Jackson Street in Morton, Illinois. Anyone like to have any comments on that? If not, we'll close that meeting. There are no presentations or special reports. Public comments, anybody like to say something, public comments? Not, the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, regular meeting August 17, 2020, and the closed session August 17, 2020, and the approval of the bills. Would we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Village President, we have a proclamation tonight regarding the pumpkin festival, our reimagined 54th annual pumpkin festival, and I'd ask council to read that proclamation.
Thank you. Title is Village Morton, Illinois proclamation by the village president regarding Morton Pumpkin Festival. Whereas Morton, Illinois was established as the pumpkin capital of the world in 1978 by the governor of Illinois. And whereas the pumpkin capital of the world is home to Libby's Pumpkin, producing 85% of the world's canned pumpkin. And whereas the Morton Chamber of Commerce is jazzed to host the reimagined 54th Pumpkin Festival, Roaring Pumpkins and all that jazz. And whereas the Village of Morton recognizes a tremendous impact of volunteerism, engagement and community support throughout our community. And whereas the safety of our community, guests and volunteers is of the utmost importance as we are following guidelines provided by federal, state and local authorities. And whereas the mission of the annual Morton Pumpkin Festival is to gather and give back while shopping and supporting our local business community. And whereas the annual Morton Pumpkin Festival has been a tradition for many over 54 years. And whereas the Morton Pumpkin Festival was awarded the Best of Peoria Community Event for 2020. And whereas the Morton Chamber of Commerce thanks their major sponsor, Libby's Pumpkin, a Nestle plant, for their community support. Now therefore, I Jeff Kaufman, Mayor of the Village of Morton, do hereby proclaim September 16 through 19 as the 2020 reimagined Morton Pumpkin Festival, Roaring Pumpkins and All That Jazz, in the pumpkin capital of the world, Morton, Illinois, and encourage all citizens to be jazzed to celebrate our Morton community through our history, memories and roaring pumpkin experiences and food ahead. Witness whereof, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the Village Morton to be affixed this 8th day of September 2020.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, everywhere I go, a lot of places, they ask me if the festival is still going this year, so I had to go to Bloomington to meet a couple of men at a job. I no more got to the driveway and they had no idea who I was. First thing they asked was, are you still having the pumpkin festival this year? So we have with us tonight the executive director of the chamber, Leanne Brown. I'm going to ask her to come up, talk about some murals and different things and all that jazz.
That's right. I knew I'd get you to say that as well. So thank you again, Leanne Brown, with the Morton Chamber of Commerce, and great to be here tonight. Thank you for the proclamation. Certainly, a lot has already begun with our roaring pumpkins and all that jazz with people ordering and picking up their donuts. New this year, the Morton Pumpkin TV, it is live, live broadcasting on our festival website, so there'll be a combination of recorded events and then also live broadcasting. We know a lot of people maybe can't travel in this year, and our gather looks different. We'll be safely gathering, but we certainly still want the impact of our pumpkin capital of the world and our 54th reimagined festival to live on and for many to still enjoy. And with that, the theme, so we are celebrating the 1920s, and that means a lot to our community with agriculture, with the Libby's Pumpkin Plant and pottery. And so with that, we've had some conversations over the years about adding murals throughout our community, and soon here during the roaring pumpkins and all that jazz, we will be able to unveil three new murals for our community. This has just been a great local partnership. Morton Industries and Parker Fabrication reached out early about some collaboration. We have commissioned a local artist, Connie Andrews. We are partnering with a local business building owner, Cobell Banker. We have Wasi Group involved with digitalizing our murals, and then Best Made Signs, Ben Camacho is helping us print the signs. So just incredible local project that the village has stepped up and now a part of it to provide an approval for these three murals. So the mayor and trustees have a little sneak peek of what they're going to look like, but we want to keep it a surprise to the public and unveil those before our roaring pumpkins and all that jazz kicks off. So stay tuned, these will be on the side of the Cobell Banker Building, the Main Street side. So thank you for the village for working through this process and joining us to bring these murals alive and really celebrate the history of our community. So you'll see some pastime images, you'll see some current time, and then a really neat collage much about our community that we can celebrate, and those that visit us and that are working throughout the community can enjoy this mural. So thank you for being a part of it, and thank you for all of our local partners, and just a great year to kick off with these murals and celebrating the 1920s and what that means for our 54th reimagined pumpkin festival as well. So if there's any questions, happy to take them, but if not, just glad to be here and celebrate our next project.
Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
I think the community will like these, they're really sharp.
Yeah, thank you.
Village Clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator is not here tonight. Chief of Police.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. Corporation Council.
Several items tonight, Your Honor. The first is ordinance number 21-17, which is an ordinance annexing the property known as 2711 West Jackson Street, Morton, Illinois, to the Village of Morton.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, Brad? Or Brad, do you have anything to say about this?
Actually, Craig.
Craig, you're here?
Yeah, obviously Kyle's in the audience. I've been working with Kyle for several months. Purchased the home there at 2711 West Jackson, and myself, Kyle, I've been working with Brad and Pat to bring him in the village. I did put an email that was sent a while back in front of you tonight, just maybe that would help answer some questions. And there's a picture that'll go along with the permit that more encourage working on to submit to IDOT. So Kyle's still got some work to do, and the majority of the cost is the water in the sewer to bring to the house, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, I'll ask. If not, call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Welcome to Morton, Kyle. The pumpkin capital of the world.
Yes. Next item tonight, Your Honor, is Resolution 07-21, which is a resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes.
Got the motion?
I'll move.
Second.
This is statutorily mandated process. We have to review closed session minutes periodically, and a resolution comes before the board whether to approve for release or maintain confidentiality of minutes. As resolution sets forth, there are three meetings for which we propose remaining the closed status of the meeting minutes and the remaining closed sessions prior to those would be approved for release to the public based on the resolution. That was prepared based on my recommendation after a review of the closed session minutes.
Any comments or concerns? Call the roll.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
My next item is Resolution 08-21, which is a resolution authorizing the destruction of audio recordings of closed meeting sessions.
Motion?
I'll move. Move to approve. Second.
Periodically, we are authorized to approve the deletion of closed session minutes, or closed session audio recordings more than 18 minutes old, more than 18 months old for meetings from which minutes have been approved by the board. So we have several old audio recordings that fit within these classifications that this resolution seeks to approve for destruction.
Any comments or concerns? Call the roll.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The fourth item on my agenda, I'd like to withdraw from request for the board's consideration tonight. I'll be working on some additional issues driving from that proposal. I would intend to bring it back before the board at your next regular meeting. Nothing further.
Our fire chief is on vacation. Director of Public Works.
Two items tonight, Your Honor. First, I'd like to ask for acceptance of bid for the 2020 miscellaneous concrete repairs phase two project and the new parking lot at Ulrich Wildlife Preserve in the amount of $177,223, and award of contract for same to Opera Men Construction Company out of Pontiac. And just to add, the Village of Morton portion of this bid is $75,091.0, and the Morton Park District portion, which is Ulrich Park, is $102,132.0.
Any motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is item B. This is ordinance 21-18. This is an ordinance authorizing second amendment to water tower lease agreement with US COC of Central Illinois LLC for a portion of the premises commonly known as 500 Detroit Avenue.
Do we have a motion? Move of approval?
Second.
This is just upgrades to the tower. We've been working with them for quite some time, the water tower there off Detroit.
How many more years' lease is this?
Well, this would just be an amendment to be able to, I honestly didn't even think we needed to get board approval until Pat told me we needed to. I had sent it to him, so this is just to update some of the antenna stuff at the top.
Okay.
But I'll have to get back to you on that. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Quick question. Are they the only?
Verizon.
Verizon's on top.
And then AT&amp;T is on the standalone pole next to it.
Okay.
And then we've got the other one there on Main Street that we worked on.
Yeah, just recently.
Five years ago, yeah. And Verizon's been working to get up on top of that one.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, that's all you have?
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
All right, zoning and coordination enforcement officer?
I have one item tonight, Your Honor. Petition number 20-05. It's a zoning amendment and special use request.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve. Second.
Would you like to add anything?
Yes, this is lots five, six and seven, the Main Street Business Park, requested zoning change from I2 to R4, and on lot five, they're requesting a special use that will allow not to exceed 44 feet in height as a special use.
Which is a three-story apartment building?
Yes.
Any comments?
So that special, alright.
Special use?
Special use. That's just for lot five?
Lot five only, yes. The rezoning is for lots five, six and seven, but the special use is solely for lot five.
And is lot five the most north one that's got blue boundaries?
Yes, you're correct. In the illustration, it's the largest of the lots.
I have a question. On the petition for zoning amendment, it talks about the not to exceed 44 feet in height, but the other information has proposed height of 39 feet.
Yes, yes.
Is that actually the proposed height, or is it going to be 44?
Well, at first I was, they requested, they said it would be 39 feet, but to play safe, they did not want to, they want to put in a number to not exceed that number.
Okay. Steve is in the audience?
Yes, Steve is here.
Yeah.
The petitioner.
Is it still the intent to be 39 feet then?
Yeah, that's the intent.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not call the roll.
I have one more question. So do we vote on this all as one item then, or is it a vote on the rezoning from lots five, six and seven, and then the vote on the special use separately? Or is it?
This was all, so administratively, this was okay to do all as one. So you're approving the rezoning for lots five, six and seven, and you're also approving the special use on lot five, all in one vote?
Okay.
Okay. No other questions? Call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all you have, correct, Brad?
Yes, that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Village trustees, do any of you have anything tonight?
I have a couple items, Your Honor.
Good.
First is business district large grants. I don't remember if I have ever discussed this with you before, but at different times during the business district meetings, which happen, I think, the second Wednesday of each month, over the last maybe three or four months, there's been discussion about potentially having a larger grant program than the $10,000 program that we currently have. As a reminder, it's, you can get reimbursed for up to 50% to a maximum of $10,000, so somebody would have to spend $20,000 to be able to get a $10,000 grant. Once they do that, they'd have to wait five years before they can ask for another grant, you know, on their property. They can spend all their own money that they want, but to get $10,000, they have to at least spend 20. So going along with that, there have been various people who have asked about a larger grant program, and I'll admit, I waffle back and forth between being for it and against it. I have a hard time comprehending handing somebody $25,000 or $50,000 out of our business district funds. There's several reasons why. We have a program that I think works well the way that it is, but when it comes to the larger grant, I'll admit, I might be a little bit, you know, OCD on this issue in that I would think we would have to be the ones to not just make the approval, but also that they should have to come talk to about, not necessarily coming to the business district commission. We have, I think, a better understanding of the issues as far as the whole village is concerned, so if we were to rewrite something for a large grant, I think we should have them come to us. I mean, that'd be my opinion. Doesn't mean that we all agree. But along with that, then I look and say, we hand out a number of $10,000 grants throughout the year. We may not hit the $100,000 total grant that we're willing to spend, you know, or total grant, grants that we give could equal up to $100,000 in any given year, but other thing that I've said is, is that as you look at Church Square, the thing that I've mentioned about that is, is that I see that as being something that is for the whole community and not specific to one entity. I think that we would get more bang for our buck to try to revitalize the downtown area by thinking larger on what we could do on that piece of property to attract more people either downtown or to Morton as a group. And to do that, you'd have to have some money, you know, saved up to be able to do it, and through this business district fund, I would hope that we would be able to save up a large amount of money that we could then do something maybe dramatic, you know, at Church Square. So going along with that statement, the thing that I'd say is, is that if we hand out, you know, $25,000 or $50,000 grants in a year, we're not going to have, not be able to save maybe quite as fast as I would hope. Now, the reason why I'm bringing this up is, is I have my own ideas, and I don't wish to impose them unless it's a majority of us who agree to it. So my thoughts are, I've caught you maybe cold on the idea, but your thoughts on somebody being able to apply for a large grant, what kind of issues would you like to see done? You know, I guess as far as restrictions and, you know, just from that perspective. The other thing to remember is, is that those business district funds can also be utilized to repair the infrastructure in the business district area. So that includes whether it's the parking lot at Church Square or, you know, in the downtown area. We can utilize some of those funds to also pay for infrastructure repairs. We can use it to pay for improvements, and I don't think we need to do this, but if we had crummy lighting downtown, we could change the lighting. You could have a standard, you know, post lights or whatever. We could either incorporate those going out farther from the downtown area, but those are all things that we can do as long as we spend the money, you know, correcting maybe issues that are there. So that could include, from my perspective, I think we've mentioned it before, things like, you know, grease traps for businesses or buildings that don't have the proper, you know, plumbing systems. We could assist with those types of things. So I guess I look at it and say, you know, if you'd like to think about it for a couple weeks and then talk about it in two weeks, I'd be glad to do that, but if you have some opinions you'd like to express now, I'd be glad to hear those. Because what I'd like to do is help the business district commission understand what we'd like them to actually think about and deal with.
I'll make a comment on that. I think at first blush, I'd like to think about it a little bit, but I think the same, you know, $50,000 grants seems like a lot to me, and like you're talking, I'd rather see, you know, as far as if we have a limited amount of funds, I'd rather see the funds go out to more people and help more people than maybe just all going to, you know, one or two people. But that being said, I don't know if I would be against maybe upping the grant slightly. Maybe instead of a $10,000 max, maybe it's a $15,000 max, and see how that, see how that goes forward. In the past, thinking about the grants, there's a lot of the grants that we get that aren't, that don't even match the, you know, come up to the $10,000 limit, and I'd still, I don't want to, I don't want to take that away.
Right.
In favor of giving only a few larger grants, and, but also understanding some projects, like you mentioned the sanitary grease, some things like that, you know, it kind of stinks if you have to spend, you know, no pun intended, if you have to spend all your $10,000 on a grease trap. And so I think I'd be okay with maybe bumping in a little bit, but maybe not to the, you know, $50,000 kind of level.
What are we currently generating revenue?
I think it's, I think it's around $350,000 to $370,000 a year.
And our goal is to try to grant $100,000 a year?
We currently have a budget that we have set. We appropriate $100,000 out of that to go to the smaller grants, or the grants that are up to $10,000.
I think by the document, the infrastructure is supposed to be around 58%, if I remember right. I'd have to get, that's the way it was set up, to help towns.
Oh, 58% of the funds.
The fund to help keep, get the infrastructures of the town up. So we have spent $500,000 in one hole separating sewers, paid for parking lots. Grease traps, I think, is kind of a good idea. That's one way of getting businesses, because I know of one grease trap, I think it costs $10,000 to put it in, and when you get done, you just have a grease trap for the business. You know, I mean, it's a way to help rejuvenate things, but I think there's different ideas we need to look at.
Have we reached in the past, recent, you know, past, have we met that $100, returning people away for grants?
I don't think there's been a year that we, in the last four, five years that I'm aware of.
Okay.
The other thing to remember, though, is, is that we can spend that money on the things that the mayor has mentioned without having to have the business district commission, you know, approve. We don't have to fill out an application. So that type of spending, I'm not saying we don't do, that's still available to us. All I'm saying and talking about is, what do we give the business district commission, you know, not necessarily authority, but recommendation level to us? And right now, $10,000 is the maximum. But we also give them, I should say, $10,000 on actual physical repairs, but I think we also give them up to $5,000 for engineering. What's the other term? Architectural services.
If they build it.
Right, right. And so we have those two different types of grants. So something like, you know, a grease trap might be a third one that we would allow separate, that you could get more, because right now you can get a engineering and architectural grant for up to $5,000 and still apply for a $10,000 grant for the facade or the bringing it up to code and stuff.
And maybe that's one to have is a utility, you know, utility infrastructure, not on the village's half, but on the, on the business owners, you know, the private utility.
Right.
Maybe you have a, you know, utility grant that's, you know, separate from those others that, you know, separate from the facade grant that could be applied for.
There's been talk about that over the years, also on lights and signage that might have three or four versions, you know, if you picked in that group, but that never, nobody's ever taken the time to do that, you know, things to enhance. And I did notice in Peoria, on University Street, clear out in Pioneer Park, they did extend the fancy lights all the way out to Allen Road with new sidewalks and new lighting. It changed Pioneer Parkway. Brad, you would know. It really, it had bike trails and it really enhanced that area with all those houses out there. So there's, if somebody could come up with different ideas, such as Church Square building.
So how often do we have requests that are beyond the $20,000?
We don't have any because the application would only give you 10. You could spend 50, but we're only, we're only going to give you 10.
How often do we, are people's plans beyond that, do we know? I mean, they would like to spend 30, but they hold it back to 20 because of the limit? Do we know?
No, I don't think that's ever been the case. I think we've just seen that money there, and we thought, well, maybe we could enhance something with a bigger grant.
Yeah.
But we never came up with a program that was fair.
I would think that if there's infrastructure, such as a grease trap, being not the facade, because from what I understand, the, our, part of our goal is to upgrade the looks of our buildings downtown, right?
Correct.
And the landscaping and all, so I would, I would be in favor of putting it separate for, for infrastructure. The other question I would have, Steve, did you say that you would like the trustees to, that would come to us instead of the?
Well, if you had, I would say if you had allowed somebody to request a grant up to $50,000, I would rather they came here and explained it rather than hear it secondhand from either Julie or myself what they are hoping or attempting to do. And believe me, if they're asking for $50,000, have an opportunity to get it, I think they should be willing to come and ask us for it directly.
So I would be in favor of keeping it at 20,000, what they're doing, and keep that process the same. And if we want to add a smaller amount...
And if we want to add a smaller amount to the infrastructure, I would like to think about that.
Okay.
That's where I'm at.
All right. Anything else? Okay. All right, and then the last thing I have down, I wasn't sure exactly what to call it, but I called it gas rebate. I had this wild, crazy idea. Sometimes I can't sleep at night because I think about things in the village. And every once in a while, something strange pops into my head. And this idea was, is that, you know, we've had this issue of the coronavirus that has affected our community, you know, since March and still is affecting us. There are businesses that have been, you know, had issues with revenues. And so anyway, what I thought is, is that based upon a couple of things. One, last year, and last year means April 30th of 2020. This last year, our fiscal year ended, we had sales, I think, of about $7.5 million in the gas fund. And we showed profits of over $500,000 for the year. I would assume that we're going to have the same this year as we did last year. And so I thought, what if we were to take, say, $52,000 or $55,000 from this year's income and reduce our charges that we have to the citizens and businesses? As you think about it, the term I would use is that, you know, if you think about the way they describe credit unions, it's owned by the depositors. Well, in the village, the citizens actually own, you know, this gas department, water department, and sewer treatment plant. I'm only talking about gas. But I thought if we were to take, say, I'll use the term $55,000 and reduce one time only in December to our customers as, one, to say we understand that there's been issues because of coronavirus and two, we're showing, you know, concern for you as well. And take that $55,000 and reduce the December invoice that goes out on the 18th? Is that correct? Julie's not here. I think it's the 18th that goes out and they pay it on the 27th. It has to be paid promptly. So the statement though would be is, is that, one, do you have any reservations about that? But I would just like to see, because we own this department and we benefit from it as a community, is there a way for us to then show that same care and concern for, one, the citizens and, two, the businesses that buy the gas from us that allow us to have, you know, such a good utility?
So what percent would that be? 55,000 for the whole community?
What percent for that month or for the year?
Month.
It's about maybe 7% of profit, I think. I didn't bring my phone with me.
I don't know, but what rebate am I going to get for my...
About 7% for the year.
I assume it would be on a percent of your pro rata basis on that December bill.
Correct. And, you know, my statement or suggestion was, is that if you guys would be willing to do it, that in October, November, we would put in the invoice envelope, put a statement in there that we're doing this. You know, it's in December. People can think that it's a holiday bonus or whatever for them, but we're doing this plan ahead. We could also say that you only get it if you pay your bill on time. If you don't, you don't get the reduction. You know, I flip-flop either way on that. But to tell them and let them know that we're doing this for them. And 7% might be high. It might be seven tenths of a percent. I don't have my calculator with me, so I can't figure it out.
Well, seven tenths of a percent is pretty insignificant.
Right, that's why, I'm not sure what it is, but...
What?
Got any quick number there, Craig? That's why I had your calculator.
I would probably want to look at it before I...
I mean, is this going to be a $15 rebate to me or a $150 rebate?
I don't know what you spend, so I can't answer, Brad.
Wow.
And I didn't try to figure, I didn't try to figure that out for myself either.
I think we could put that together fairly quick.
Right.
Give you a better idea.
But I don't want to go to the effort if you have absolutely no interest in it.
Well, if it's $15, I think it'd be more trouble than it's worth.
Well, based on using, you know, the computer, I don't think it's difficult. I talked to Mary today, asked, you know, I talked to Julie today. I don't think we would spend a whole lot of time on it. It'd be one calculation that would just go across the board to everybody.
I understand. I just bring it back with me.
If you wanted me to give $1,000 to everybody, I'm sorry, I can't do that because that'd be, you know, $5 million.
That's my point.
So you said about $55,000?
Right.
Profits of $500,000?
Right.
So that'd be 11% of your profits for the year?
Right, right.
So, I mean, if you're...
1%.
Yeah. So.
1%.
I think off the, I guess, just kind of, I think off the cuff, I think it sounds like a great idea. I'd like to do the math and see where it comes out and a little bit like what Brad said, you know, if it turns out to be okay, well, everybody gets $1.50 back, then, you know, is it... Even though it's not really that much trouble to do, is it really doing anything? I don't know.
Right.
But I'd like to see that, I'd like to see the numbers of it. I'm not against, I'm not against it.
Okay.
I guess I feel the same way as Brad. It's probably a pretty insignificant amount of money. I mean, if you're talking about, you know, 1% of my December bill, that's pretty insignificant. I guess if...
I don't think it'd be 1% of your December bill. The total revenue, the $0.5 million is the profit we made, okay? Our sales are $7.5 million, okay? So, and sales for that month would probably be about $530,000. I think that's what they were last December or what we sent out. So you'd be looking at about 10% of that bill.
Yeah, it looks like I think just doing, I think it would be closer to the 8, 10% back, which at that point, you know, I think it, I think it would be, you know, worth the effort. And even if it's, even if it's 10 bucks or 15 bucks, you know, it's 10 or 15 bucks in somebody's pocket.
Right. And it's like giving a dividend to our shareholders.
Yeah.
I guess I would be more of the mind of us reviewing our rates and adjusting our rates such that throughout the year, we're charging less if we feel like we are making that much revenue, profit, I guess.
Okay.
I just want to remind you, the citizens do like blacktop, not chip seal in the community.
Well, we are talking gas funds here versus other funds. And I know those funds have been... They've been very useful in doing some things in the village that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. But I think that would have to all be taken into account. I mean, I don't think we want to go in there and raid, you know, raid the fund and break it. But if we feel like there's a little room, maybe we ought to consider.
But I think as trustee Leach said, in this year, the difficulties people have had, I think it'd be a nice gesture if we can make it work.
So if you're not opposed to it, I'll get the rest of the information together and have it in your meeting packet for two weeks from now or two weeks from yesterday. Is that all right?
Yeah, I just think we need more information.
Sure. And again, trustee Mennel, I realize $15 may seem insignificant, but I still think it makes a statement from us as a village board to the citizens, even if it's that low. Okay? And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
To answer trustee Newman's question earlier on the business district funds, before COVID, for quite a while, we have been collecting between $30,000 to $42,000 a month in revenue at average. And that 5% tax is not on groceries or car sales. So it just kind of went, and that was before COVID. So we're kind of watching where all of that is, so. But that's kind of what the average is, and that's why it's been making about $350 a year. Any other trustees got anything? If not, there's no need for closed session, so if we could have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.